And get started, I'll call the meeting to order at seven. Thank you, everybody. We'll state the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you. Alright, I'm referring to our agenda for tonight. The first item is public speak. Do we have any public speak? Hearing none, I guess let's move on to item three, which is additions and deletions of the agenda items. Anybody have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item number four, which is the town administrators report. Eric, floor is yours.
Okay, Amanda, can I share my screen here? Can you give me the power and the glory?
You've got the power.
Okay.
Glory is up to you, Eric.
Let's see if I can figure out which one it is. Yes. Okay, apologize to not getting you this at a reasonable time. Are you seeing a word document?
Yep.
Yeah, with the graph.
Okay. So first things first, of the things that are going to affect us. As you probably are well aware, the state is spiking pretty dramatically on COVID. I've been plotting day by day what our infection rate is, the fourteen day rolling average of infection. And that's what this graph is. We had a spike in mid-October. We actually broke the red, you know, fifteen cases, you know. Per day, per one hundred thousand population back in October, but just barely. And then we immediately went back down. We had a kind of, you know, temporary spike over about a week and a half. Then it went down to baseline and since about the ninth of November, it's been accelerating pretty dramatically. We're a small town, so our data is always gonna look really choppy. Because a few people here, a few people there caused big spikes in our data. But the, the bottom line is we're about double the threshold for a town to be in the red zone as far as the state goes. They consider anything over fifteen. You know, to, to be their trigger. And we're at about twenty-nine as of today. So that's pretty much where we're at. Don't know where we're going, but you know, it's not particularly promising. So we are gonna do some changes at the town level. Immediately after this Thursday, we're gonna close the town hall to the public. Instead of being appointment only, it will be closed. It will be town hall employees only. If people need to meet with somebody, it will be in the. You know, the all-purpose, the community room. As most of you know, the governor has reverted the state back to phase two point one. And then there were a bunch of other executive orders and DPH guidelines. So the thing that has made life difficult is that now if you are going to do in-person meetings. You also have to provide basically remote access, even if you're scheduling an in-person meeting. Cause anybody can request that. So it's making in-person meetings much more difficult. Because you have to have the capability to do a hybrid meeting. So that's kind of annoying. There is a public town meeting that will be scheduled in January. Got pushed back from December to accept donation of actually three parcels, not two parcels. But it's essentially revenue neutral to the town and they're being donated. They're not being. You know, we're not paying for them. So it's not something the board of finance has to really weigh in on. I'm just letting you know. And they're all basically orphaned open space parcels. So the tax implications on one of them is like ninety-two dollars a year in revenue. And the other one's in a nonprofit, so we're not getting anything from it anyway. There's no real issue with us. Obviously, we held an election. The election went really well. The turnout in Andover was fantastic. We had an eighty-seven percent turnout of eligible voters. So that was pretty cool and we had no issues. We did have to employ a hell of a lot more poll workers than we normally do. Because the state requirements had kind of gone through the roof. And we actually also chewed up a fair bit of money doing the prep work, dealing with all the absentee ballots. Cause those are a super time-intensive. Thing, you know, based on the state guidelines for what you have to do. So we're okay budget-wise now, but if we. Get into budget season in the spring and we have municipal elections too, I suspect we're gonna be over in. In that line item. Wally was very, he's told me, you know, almost since July. That he thought he anticipated that there was no way they were gonna stay within that budget. So, but you know, it depends on how many issues we have, how many town meetings we have, what do we actually have coming up? Cause that budget tends to fluctuate a fair bit. And what the absentee ballot situation is for the town elections in the spring. That's still an unknown. So Public Works, the road crew foreman Ed has officially retired as of December one. We did agree to meet him and pay him out an additional portion of his sick leave. To kind of make that happen in an orderly way. So, which, you know, is not ideal, but on the other hand. Ed maxed out his three hundred days of sick leave many years ago and has been giving all the excess days back. So from a financial standpoint, yes, it's, it's definitely a hit to the town. But, you know, to make the transition to a true public work supervisor. You know, that's what we ended up having to do. We have a position open for both the maintainer one and the public work supervisor. We're kind of negotiating a little bit now around that. So we'll see, I mean. I will be honest in that what we were paying Ed compared to what the job responsibilities we're asking for. Are very different. So there's gonna be some increase. We're gonna have to increase that. Exactly how much? I don't know. That's gonna be a discussion. You know, going forward. But it's definitely, it's gonna cost us some money, that's for sure. We're still doing roadwork. We still got some driveway aprons to complete after the paving operations we've done in the last month. And we're still continuing to fill potholes from time to time. We're talking about instituting a weather service that's tailored just to public works departments. We're looking at one, there's one other we may consider also. The costs are fairly reasonable given. You know, if it makes you make better judgment and you could use public works more efficiently. By having a more accurate weather forecasting, it's probably financially worth it. You know, the plans run from about a thousand bucks to about fifteen hundred bucks, depending on exactly how much info. And what bells and whistles you want.
Eric?
Yes.
Quick question. This is some private service that supposedly gives us better weather forecasting than we can get for free?
Yes, yes, because you want. Kind of different things than the average person. You know, one of the things you want is you wanna forecast of what the road temperatures are gonna be. Cause that's critical to how much salt you put down and when your, whether snow's gonna stick, whether it's not gonna stick. You know, and you want much more accurate. You know, there's a bunch of things that you want tailored specifically to a location. You know, I've dealt with professional weather services in, in the sailing. You know, we use them for weather forecasting, for, you know, picking locations of events and accurately forecasting. Snowfall and things of that nature. So. You know, I've seen it be a huge advantage to me in the planning stage. It's almost more a question of which service you use, whether as opposed to whether you should do it or not, at least in my book. And we'd probably just pay for it out of town aid road. So you wouldn't see it in the actual budget anyway. Not that, it's not all, still tax dollars. Uh, we're still up in the air over the closing out the Times Farm Bridge project. As most of you know, that was the bridge project from hell. It was initially started about two thousand. Design and then dropped because the town didn't really wanna pay for it to actually do it. And then eventually the DOT basically said either you start building it, rebuilding it, or we're gonna condemn it. And, you know, nobody's gonna be driving over it. So then they started it again. It got completed in about two thousand and seventeen. But there was never, there was never a final clearance. And it's, it's chewed up an enormous amount of my time. But basically what's happened is the, both staff members that were our. Registered professionals on the job at CME Engineering left the company to pursue other opportunities. They basically just about closed out the project, but not quite. We got all the final approvals from the state. But there's still, uh, they're still arguing about one change order that occurred. In like the summer of two thousand and seventeen. And it's about a seventeen thousand dollar discrepancy between the. Between the contractor and the engineering firm that has to certify the expenses. So we would be on the hook for just twenty percent of that seventeen thousand. And we have the money sitting in that account. But I actually couldn't even pay the extra money right now just to close it out. Because then the state wouldn't reimburse me for any of it. So we're just sitting on it. You know, hopefully we'll resolve that in the next couple of months. But I know I've been saying that since I took over the administrator. And I heard Joe say that for two years, his entire time in office. So maybe it really will be in a couple of months, but you know, who knows? We did get a steep grant. We were notified on the ninth, just before the board of selectmen meeting. That we had gotten a steep grant for paving and reclaiming a section of Long Hill Road as well as a section of Shoddy Mill Road. So that's about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand bucks added to the paving budget that we didn't have. So that's good news. The connectivity grant is, I'm still struggling trying to get the state to give me. A document, which is really annoying. It is just a letter saying that sometime in the future, they will give me an encroachment permit. An encroachment permit is necessary anytime you do construction within the right of way of a. Of a state road. Basically because there's another construction project going on there at the same time, which is the upgrade of the actual signal lights. They didn't wanna issue it because the encroachment permit and the work that was being done at the intersection at the time. Were coming out of two different divisions in DOT. And the connectivity grant is being run by a whole different division. So you have basically three divisions of. DOT, which aren't really communicating very well with each other. It's kind of annoying. Here's the bottom line and the unfortunate part. We've gotten till December thirty-first. To sign a contract with the contractor that we picked to do the actual construction. Because we're using a, basically an accelerated construction program called EZIQC. That is run by the. Capital Regional Council of Governments did the initial bid, you know, package for it. So the, the good news from us is the DOT really likes those projects. Run through EZIQC because it makes their lives easier. And since it's not tax dollars, it's the DOT's dollars anyway. If they like the program, I'm happy to use it. The, the downside is if we don't have an agreement in place by December thirty-first. Then they're renegotiating the contracts for next year. And depending on who the contractor that's chosen. I may have to start over with the, with a lot of the, the. Design bidding, which would really annoy me, but you know. Still no reason why that shouldn't be done starting early spring, early to mid-spring next year. It's just a question of whether I have to work really hard in the spring or whether I just have to sign it by December thirty-first. But there's two things that have to be released before then, and I don't know whether that'll happen. Questions on that? Sorry, I know it's mostly irrelevant. Town hall, we're still in the planning stages for figuring what would have to happen. If we did have to shut down the town hall again and send employees home. I'm hoping we don't do that. But we're, we're spending a small amount of money that's in our IT budget to equip us with a few new laptops. To kind of make that process a little smoother. You know, as you know, the COVID count is rising pretty rapidly. So it may be something we have to deal with at some point. We are also implementing a program called Security Mentor. Which is basically an online training program in information security, which. And cybersecurity, which I think as you all know, is kind of important for the town. Given some of the things we've experienced in the last few months. So we're, we're in the process of implementing that. I think it's a relatively low-cost program. It's, you know, about nine dollars a year per employee that participates. So, so we're doing that. And we are also, we've, you know, essentially hired. The Assistant Finance Officer. Her name is Marina Pendolphy. And we're just about square with the union for negotiating the change in scope of work. Scope of hours, work location, that kind of thing. So we should be in pretty good shape with that. As I told you, I think at the last meeting, Barbara Griffin is leaving effective November twenty-eighth. So not too long from now. And there's not gonna be a lot of overlap between those positions, which is gonna make things a little interesting. Laura Edwards, who's the business manager at the elementary school. I have talked to her a bit about. Taking some of the slack and just making sure we have somebody at least available. That really understands the Phoenix system. So at least if, if the wheels really come off, we can do the basics. We can, you know, write checks and. Make payroll. So, so that's in place. We're gathering. You know, we, we don't have a lot of applicants so far for the finance director spot. There do seem to be a number of finance director slots open right now across the state. So that's gonna be a little bit, you know, we'll see how that goes.
How, how are we recruiting for that one, Eric?
So we've advertised it through CCM. I mean, we put a little thing in the paper. And we're advertising it through the, the CCM equivalent for schools. I forget what they call that, but they have a, a. A group for the finance directors. And then I think Laura Edwards said she was gonna post it on, there's one other, basically listserv. Which is all the, the, both business managers and municipal finance professionals. So that one, I don't know. I wonder whether we should be looking at other options. You know, to, to gather. You know, to, to get more qualified candidates. You know, so we at least have a bigger pool to deal with.
Yeah, sometimes it pays the castle wide net, but it's more work and. You gotta filter a lot of garbage sometimes, but it might be worth it.
Yeah, if you've got suggestions about where you would. I mean, I got the two avenues I thought were probably most appropriate, but.
Yeah, they, they both make sense, given the targeted, you know, targeted. Audience for that. And this is kind of a specialty thing. I mean, the only other thing I would think about is just going on one of the broad employment. Boards like Indeed or something like that, you know, typically that's, you know, it's like what my company does, but that's. You know, I don't know how, how well that works for this kind of position, when you're looking for somebody with municipal accounting experience.
Sure. Yeah. So that's that. Most of you are probably aware that we finally updated the town's. Personnel policy. The policy we were working under dated back to two thousand and seven. And the two thousand and seven version was a very minor rewrite of one from like nineteen ninety-six. So to say it was out of date was kind of an understatement. So we took on last year a complete rewrite of the personnel policy, you know, and it took a while. You know, we used our labor attorney to, as the final review of it. And one of the things that came up was something that. I've been aware of since I took over. I just haven't really had a good solution. And that is that our, uh, the head librarian. Person who actually runs the day-to-day operations of the library. Amy has been a twenty-six hour a week employee for a long time. However, she's always been given the benefits, vacation, sick time, et cetera. Of a full-time employee. So, which, I mean, considering she's the library director and she probably works considerably more than twenty-six hours a week. That's probably not unreasonable. I approached the library board and I said, some way or other, you've gotta correct this because we can't go running with. A town employee and a personnel policy and a town employee with no contract. That is getting benefits and stuff that's clearly contradictory to the. You know, the personnel policy. So that's gonna be. Gonna have to be negotiated, I think, on the next budget. There's really only two options. The first is write a standalone employment contract. Just locks that in for Amy at the hours that she's at. Or, you know, transition her to a thirty-hour a week employee. So she's technically a full-time employee. I don't have a, a preference either way. We, that's gonna be a board of selectmen and board of finance decision going forward as to what you actually wanna do. I'm just making you aware that, that the library board knows they have to address that in some way. You know that we've begun the revaluation process. I don't know whether any of you have had visits to your own house. But we publicized the heck out of it, put it in the paper, sent a flyer to everybody and used social media to push it. So far, we've actually had a really good response and we haven't encountered any problems whatsoever, which is encouraging. And we still have not locked in for oil and diesel. But I think we probably will in the next. You know, week or so. I know not too long, or at the last meeting, you guys were all pretty much in agreement with doing it. We're still just trying to, I'm trying to do a better job of forecasting what our actual use is. But there's a lot of variability in it, just because we don't know whether the. The school is gonna end up at three or four school buses. And there's a big difference in fuel usage for three versus four. Since the, the buses account for about half our total diesel bill. So that's going on. We're still waiting for federal reimbursement for COVID. Expenses. And let's see. We already talked about potentially the registrar's budget going over. And that's basically what I have, unless you have questions about this from me.
I have a question.
Shoot.
Just curious whether you plan, was, is it in the plan to have lines drawn on the, the roads? Or is that part, or like part two or part three down the road?
So we are doing line striping. We'll, we actually, if we hadn't had that windstorm the other day, the line striping would have already been done. But it was not so, I think it's back on the schedule for this Friday. Part in the day, part in the evening. Probably the stop bars and the sharrows. Will be done during the day, cause those can just be painted and then put cones up so people don't run over it. And the actual lines typically are done, you know, late at night. So it doesn't interfere with traffic flow and people don't drive all over them and get yellow paint everywhere.
Does that matter whether the roads, how the roads were actually completed? Cause some had different top.
No, no, we're using a water-based formula. That's, it doesn't really matter whether you're going over chip seal or micro or standard pavement.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
I'm good.
Mark, you're muted.
Easier to hear me when I'm not muted. Once again, eight meetings today at my regular day job. You'd think I'd. Alright, hearing other questions for Eric, we'll move on to our next item, which is the treasurer's report. Barbara could not attend tonight. Eric, do you have anything specific to address in there?
No, nothing really, other than what we've already discussed. I think you've got a, we talked about last meeting, the two things that we know are gonna be, you know, over. Which is probably the registrar's office. And also the chipping of the brush pile at the transfer station, which has been completed at this point. The only other thing is we're, you know, again, we had a big windstorm and we ended up, you know, busting some. Overtime with public works dealing with that again. So we've been just, we've been going. You know, fairly considerably over on overtime, but you know, that's just. I, I feel like we're gonna be stuck with that for. Several years until we get a lot more roadside trees down. Because every time it, every time it's windy, you know, trees are coming down on the lines and coming down in the roads. You know, we had like maybe three of them that last windstorm, you know, so that, that's gonna be an ongoing issue. You know, but hopefully we'll address it as we get farther along into, to trimming trees along the roadway.
So it seems to me the appropriate thing to be sorry would be the budget for it.
Yeah, yeah, that was exactly where I was going. I mean, this is relevant to the tree budget year to year. I was one of the people who lost power the other day. You know, it wasn't bad, but I didn't have to fire up my generator, but it was. You know, it happened and we were out for, I don't know what it was, five, six hours. And, you know, I didn't even know that was coming, so.
And put it in perspective, there were, I think, nine separate outages in the town of Andover. There were two big ones that wiped out most of everything, but there were nine individual smaller outages that affected. You know, specific areas. So that shows you the kind of level of, of damage. One windstorm can cause with this many dead trees and dead limbs coming down.
And not for nothing. And not for nothing, that was not the craziest windstorm we've ever seen. Like, that was not even that bad.
Well, surprising how it happened. Much damage and enough causing.
Agreed. I did not expect to lose power that night. I had no inclination that was coming and zap, everything went out, so.
Well, obviously you're not looking at the town's Facebook page or you would have seen.
I am not on Facebook. I'm a Facebook curmudgeon. I rejected it from the first from the get go.
Yes, it was, it was actually pretty funny because um, you can look on Ever Source's utility outage map. And they superimposed like the storm front. And you could just see like right as the storm front, just. The outage map just explode behind the storm front as it moves all the way across.
My gripe was by the time my power went out, when I used my phone to try to access the ever source outage thing. It was so jammed up, I couldn't even get a response. I was so irritated, but that was just my own personal travail, whatever. Uh, bringing it back to the town.
Their computers weren't working very well. Their site was, and they didn't even have a lot of outage for numbers.
Yeah, and their website was completely shot when I tried to access it. Um. But uh, whatever, that's ever sources, that's an ever source issue. Our town issue obviously is trying to stay ahead of. The trees and where we put our money and it's just relevant to me. To to think about what the practical consequences of this are if we are being penny wise and pound foolish when we. Put a certain amount on the tree budget. We say, wait, we gotta make the bout budget balance. We gotta make it so that we can't increase taxes so much. And then we end up spending on the back end of overtime anyway. Just my take.
There is that. Um. You know. We still put it in perspective. We have still. Spent this year six times um, what we've budgeted in previous years. So we did ramp up our spending a lot.
For tree work.
For tree work. It's just, it's a huge pro problem to wrap your, you know, your kind of hands around. The other thing with the OT budget is just simply. You know, so public works employees, you know, they work eight hour days. And anytime you're working more than eight hour days, you know, you're stuck paying them overtime. And the problem is. Most of the roadwork contractors that we hire work long days. Um, you know, so, so the reality is. You know, there's been consistently a couple hours at the end of the day where we're pairing OT. For the guys doing the uh, you know, monitoring. You know, the the road safety people that are there with the contractors or are monitoring the contractors. And I don't know that, you know, part of it is, we've just done a lot of roadwork this year compared to. You know, in years past, we did one or two really big projects. And by doing kind of preservation and really doing lots of different projects at different times. You know, we're chewing up a lot more hours, you know. And and some OT doing that. So that was again, something I I honestly didn't really anticipate because it's not something we occurred. I mean, last year. You know, in the last two weeks, um. Two weeks before the end of last fiscal year, we had spent zero dollars in our regular overtime budget. Uh, because we just, we didn't need it last year for whatever reason. Um, or not zero, but we had, we spent very little of it. Um. So, you know, that's a year to year difference.
So you're just saying basically, Eric, if somebody works, if the tree people come and they work a ten hour day.
Right.
We're just eating up two hours overtime every day.
Right, because, because the the deal is, is that it's. It's always cheaper for us to provide, even when you take in overhead and benefits and all that crap. It's still much cheaper for us to use a town employee to do the traffic control. Than to hire a service or use the contractors to do it. So we end up using our guys an awful lot, just basically standing there, you know, doing the traffic control. Contractors, right? Um, you know. And uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
Yep.
Okay, any further questions for Eric? Any further comments or questions on the town treasure report? I looked through it. I didn't see anything unusual. I didn't look at it in super deep, close detail, but.
I know Barbara's not on, but I just wanted to thank her for her time and energy over the past, you know, few years and. We're wishing her the best.
I'm gonna miss her, that's for sure. She was great.
Yeah, the, no, and so her, so she's actually done at the end of the month here then, her contract grant at the end of the year, but she's done at the end of the month, right?
Ten month, ten days, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And I mean, most, some of those days are holiday days, so basically she's.
She's done, yeah.
Yeah, there'll be a little overlap, but not a lot. Um, and we're gonna end up relying on Laura. Um, you know, and and basically hiring, the town is gonna end up hiring Laura to fill in some of the gaps. Uh, the training of of. The new assistant finance officer.
Yeah, I saw that you put in there the expected uh, contract rate is about seventy five an hour. Agree that that is not at all an unreasonable rate for somebody with the. Predator skills and knowledge for this job, you know, that well of a match. You you're not gonna. Do much better than that. That's completely reasonable, in my view.
Yeah, and and our other option was to use the the CPA Cheryl that we were dealing with a little bit, but. She's a hundred and fifty bucks an hour and I'd much rather pay Laura uh, half that than uh, um. You know, plus Laura already knows the Phoenix system. Um, she has some familiarity, familiarity. Uh, you know, we use the same payroll service, so there's a lot of things. She doesn't necessarily know. You know, what we pay people and the ins and outs of our system, but but I can do that portion. You know, she at least knows how to to do all the paperwork for it. So I think, you know, as a stopgap, that will work. Um, not ideal, but it will work. We'll make it work.
All right. Yeah, well, I guess we'll have to. All right, should we move on to agenda item number six, which is budget transfers? I don't see anything listed here for. Uh, budget transfers or over expenditure requests. We have any?
Yeah, there there's nothing at this point.
Okay. Move on to item seven, which is old business. Um, just uh. Kind of covering ground on a couple of things we still need to close out. Um, twenty twenty one meeting scheduled, that's actually closed. We voted on it last. Uh, meeting had had some motions to amend the original proposal. Uh, I think Amanda's published that and she's included it in this packet. So I think we're all set there and this can be removed from future uh, agenda items. Um. COVID nineteen update, I think you kind of gave that already. Uh, Eric, do you have any other input or anybody have any other questions? Okay.
Oh, sorry. Go Eric, go.
No, I'm just saying be safe. You know, it's, you can think about right now, the underlying rate in the community. Is uh, at the beginning, when there wasn't a lot of testing. The best guess was the underlying rate of infection was about ten times the actual. Number of actual positives. Um, because of the increased testing, um, they think that a better number today to use is about five times. But since we've had either ten or eleven positives. Uh, in the last week. You can assume that there's somewhere around a hundred residents running around right now with COVID nineteen.
Uh, wow.
Tested.
So I'll just mention as somebody who has kids in the school system, that the school just recently had held a poll. And as the results of that poll came in, we are gonna go virtual for a week after Thanksgiving. A yes. Uh, as a way of just saying, okay, look, a lot of people, myself included. Are gonna go to grandma's for Thanksgiving.
Yep.
And, you know, for a variety of reasons, you can. Argue it either way, or a lot of people are gonna do it. So they're gonna just say, all right, let's take a week. And go virtual for that week. And try to cut off the possibility of everybody bringing COVID back to the school. So, it's a wise thing. I voted yea and it carried the day, so we're gonna do that. And hopefully that'll get AES through without it. A big outbreak because they've been doing so well.
Yeah.
Uh, within person. You know, even despite the pandemic.
Right, so the school system has officially had two cases uh, within the school system as of today. Um. So.
I'm not sure I even knew that, Eric. That's news to me.
Uh, yes, the reason, there there's a couple of reasons that wasn't really publicized. And part of it was both the individuals were not actually at school. Because they were close contacts of somebody, so they were quarantining when they came down. So although they are part of the school system, they weren't physically present during any infection period. Which is why there has not been any notification.
Okay, that seems reasonable.
But what I'm saying is that if we make it to Thanksgiving. Um, and don't shut down early, I would consider that probably in a.
A win, right? So we're gonna have the week after Thanksgiving for sure. And then my take is, we'll see where the numbers are going and who knows. They're gonna send all the kids home with the Chromebooks. Um, that's already in progress. They're prepping. Uh, you know, we had the parent teacher conferences recently and they were already thinking about it. It wasn't done yet. And then last week, we got the poll. Poll results came in, everybody kind of agreed it was the idea, or at least two thirds, one third. And that's the way they're going. It strikes me as a reasonable approach, so.
Yeah.
We'll see.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you that on the town's perspective, what I'm trying to do, which does not look like I'm gonna be successful pulling off. But what I wanted to do was say the Monday after Thanksgiving, the town hall is closed. But all employees get paid, but their job for the day is to go get a COVID test. And then they're allowed back in the building.
I like that.
Um, which is great in theory, but. You know, there's been such a spike in testing right now. I was trying to get an outfit to guarantee us. You know, slots and reasonable wait times for it. And I don't know that I can do that. And I'm not sure I wanna make employees wait. You know, four or five hours in line to get a COVID test, cause I'm not sure I would, you know. I'm not sure most of them would do it. Um, you know. So that's kind of where.
I got the COVID test at CVS, right in Hebron there, and you go online and you make an appointment. And you go through the drive through. I got the results back in two days. That was like three weeks ago. That was like three weeks ago, so I don't know how it is now.
Diane, I mean, it was already going up three weeks ago, so that's great. So I'm, I'd, I'd love to hear that because when I had, the last time we had to have someone in my family tested. This was July fourth or just before July fourth, it was July second. Uh, it took ten days for the test results to come back. It was such a disaster. Um.
Getting a little longer now. My wife just had to have a test last week and it took about four or five days for the test.
So the fact that Diane got. A two day test result, that's fantastic. Um, good to know, CBS and Hebrew. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can go to most any CVS that has a drive through and get a COVID test online. And they only book three days out. You can only get a window for three days out. I don't know if it's changed.
Yeah, the problem is last, when I've been checking, there are no like Coventry. You know, there are no three day slots. I mean, unless you log on at like midnight.
Right, they're filling up real quick.
Well, one AM, you might be able to get a slot, you know, three days out, but.
Good to know for the night owls amongst us.
Exactly. Exactly.
That's what I did when I had to order groceries back when you couldn't get anything.
Oh, God, yeah, do you remember they were, they were backed up for a month. I remember that. I remember looking at it and going, oh, to hell with it.
Do that again.
They actually set up a thing at Travelers uh, for, and I think I wanna say in April, at one point, we could. Ordered a certain number of particular staples. Uh, and you could go to the company garage in Hartford and get it delivered to your car. Through the company. That's, that's a long time ago, but, you know, it feels like ten years ago, but it was only like six months ago. Anyway, we're a little off topic, so.
Yeah, let's uh, let's roll back in, guys. Um, you know, if you have anything regarding to the town's COVID update, let's uh. Let's move on to the next item. Uh, fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, I your report, and that's the job of your chairman, yours truly. And I'm still working on that, so I don't have anything to really report there. I will continue working on it. Hopefully get it done by the end of next week. Um. Item seventy is the Board of Education request for unexpected funds. If you remember, we had talked about that and we. Opted, I think it was in the September meeting that we would, um, you know, I think Barbara informed us, Laura told us there really weren't any. Leftover unexpended funds as they had planned, so you know, I did write a letter and I think that, uh, yes, um. Man is included in the packet, so uh, sent that on to the school just to let them know that we took no action based on that information. And if it was incorrect, let us know. So we'll see when it comes back from that. Don't expect it. Um. Item seventy is the Ram Board of Education contract negotiations. Uh, I did have a uh, uh, meeting uh, with the, um, I'm pull that up here. Um, I think it was the Hebron uh, Board of Finance Chair and and uh, the representative from the uh. Ram Board of Education as well as the acting uh, superintendent. And basically, you know, I'll summarize real quick. They just kind of wanted to let us know where this went. It was a little bit surprising to them. But apparently the, uh, you know, they thought that they were gonna have a normal contract negotiation. But the union came back to them with a proposal that they thought was, made a lot of sense. I guess the union's uh, approach was that they decided that it just wasn't the year to really be pushing for a more equitable contract. Um, and so they uh, made some changes. They've made a proposed. What they ended up doing is uh. Let's see, they ended up going um, to a zero percent increase. Um, but what they did is they allowed teachers all to move up a step in the, in the contract. Uh, rates and what that is, ended up roughly providing about a three point five percent increase, which is. Is not necessarily uh, that on uh, off topic, but it's only a one year contract. They didn't do the normal three year uh, contract, decided it would be better to kind of delay. The the negotiations until next uh, next cycle. Um, the general feeling and they had some data to support this is that the RAM teachers are generally paid. Lower than similar districts uh, throughout the state. Um, and they felt that they need to be a little more competitive in their pay to retain teachers. Um, but again, just feeling like if if this contract ended up going to arbitration, they, the the superintendent in the Board of Ed. Felt that they would not be able to do any better and probably would end up worse than um, where they, what the union had offered them for this year. So they felt that it was in the best interest uh, of the, of the. Towns to uh, to go ahead and the school district to go ahead and uh, ratify that contract. Now, they had a um. They had a meeting on November sixteenth and I would, I'd hoped to attend, but I just couldn't do it. And I went to look uh, for the meeting minutes and I did not see that they, we were not posted yet on the RAM website. Um, Eric, are you where, where that vote went?
I am not, no.
Okay. I I'm gonna guess that it, I didn't look to find the recording. I didn't have time to go through it to find out what the end result was. Uh, but I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna base on what I was hearing, that it probably got approved. Um, so that basically settles the RAM teachers' contract for the next year. Um, you know, about a three and a half percent increase in the overall salary for the, for the teachers. And won't necessarily have that kind of increase on the budget, but that is a component of the budget. So the way the process works now is that the. Uh, contract goes to the towns in in theory for thirty days of review and possible objection if. If we were to raise an objection. Um, if there's no formal objection, then the uh, then the agreement becomes uh. Basically becomes law, becomes ratified. So I think it's, it's a done deal at that point. Um, the superintendent did say that they hope to be. The superintendent did say that they hope to be in a very low or zero increase in their overall budget for next year. Um, they're still seeing a decrease in enrollment. Um, attrition itself may reduce some of the actual staff positions. So he did think that they probably would come in uh, basically flat on the budget or. With a small increase. So you know, knowing that they've got decreasing enrollment, obviously they still have fixed costs. That was kind of where, what the landscape looks like at this point. So. Uh, so that was, it was an interesting presentation, you know, learned a lot about things I didn't know much about in terms of the school budgets, how it's managed at the RAM. But uh, that, that was about it. Um, alright, does anybody have any questions? Okay, well, um, I guess let's roll on to our next agenda. Item eight, new business. Um, discuss and act upon the following, hiring the Assistant Finance Officer. Eric, you already touched on this a little bit. Do you have anything more to add?
No, no, we're uh. We're pretty much already hired the Assistant Finance Officer. Um, so that was just more notification than anything else.
Yeah, and she starts.
She starts this coming Monday.
Okay, we just gotta get that stuff ironed out, okay? And the next item is the Finance Director position and you've already touched on that as well. Difficulties recruiting for that. Any additional comment?
No, Amanda, how many applications do we have so far? Do you remember?
Um, I believe we have five. So I'm not sure if that's a. A sufficient amount to start scheduling interviews.
I guess I hadn't seen the five. Last I heard, we only had three. Okay.
I just want to make a comment on hiring. You mentioned advertising. We use Indeed at work. They have some pretty cool features. People can actually do um. Voice responses to questions. So you can get a feel, you know, how they speak and how they answer things. We also, instead of pulling people in for interviews, we do. Phone interviews uh, to kind of weed out some people just to maximize our time. I know you're kind of busy Eric, so. Just kind of, that's how we do it.
Yeah, that's not a bad. You know, I mean, one of the things uh, in, in, I'm not sure it's necessarily applicable. For a finance director position because you're looking for a pretty exact set of criteria. But you know, I've been really surprised that. You know, there have been a number of people that I probably would have. Well, there were definitely a couple of people I didn't really want to interview. Um, based on their resume and then having interviewed them, I had a very different, you know, feeling for them. So. Yeah, I think you should at least talk to everybody who applies, but you're right, bringing them in for an interview isn't always the best. Use of time.
I think there are some, there are some costs to some of those features with indeed, but I, I really don't know much about how that's structured. So.
They bait you with some free stuff to get you to use the service. It's not, it's not ridiculously expensive. I just like, cause you cast a wide net.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I mean, this is, you know, one of two or three really critical positions in the town. So, you know, it's worth it to take the time to get it right.
I agree. I think you, you don't want to rush to hire the wrong person. That's the night I think we. Kind of learned that in the position we had not too long ago. So.
Okay, any other questions on that? Suggestions? Okay, item HC is the software transition.
Honestly, we haven't really made any progress since the last meeting. Um, we had a couple initial scoping meetings. They're supposed to get back to us with some stuff. They haven't done that so far. Um, we need to get that back rolling. Um, I gotta spend a little time on that. Um, you know, the big thing on the town's perspective is just establishing what we do end up wanting for a chart of accounts. Um, and while I've got a basic structure for that, I, I sort of feel like. We really want some guidance from uh. You know, whoever's gonna end up as the finance director for that. So I'm almost wondering whether. You know, that's the kind of thing where we almost have to wait until we have the finance director in the door. And then drop that in their lap also along with all the rest of the stuff. I don't know, that's as far as I've really thought about it. Um, I have spoke to Mahoney Sable and Michael, uh, our auditor said they would. He said he really didn't want to have anything to do with exactly how we set up our chart of accounts. Cause he said that's pretty highly personal and that's really how we want it. They just map from whatever we do to whatever reporting format they, they, they want. What he, where he said he would like to be involved is when we start setting up. Uh, what funds we actually want and all our bank accounts. Um, because there's, we have, we have a, we have the ability to use pooled cash. And get rid of an enormous number of bank accounts that we have and it's probably worthwhile doing that as part of the transition. So, and he said he would assist us in that and, and coming up with what ones really had to stay standalone accounts and funds. And what one could all be considered pooled cash and just put in one big fund. So. That's where I am with that.
Okay. Makes sense to me. Okay, if uh, no other questions or comments, um, we're all on to eight D, which is the audit.
Uh, we've, they're starting. They've requested information from both, both us and the Board of Fine, or not the, the Board of Ed. Um, so we've provided them quite a bit of information at this point. They haven't really said when they're gonna want to come and do work on site. Um, but certainly earlier than they did last year. Probably not getting the audit in by December thirty first. But hopefully working on it prior to that. So we're not as delayed as we have been in the last, you know, series of years.
Let's hope not.
Let's hope not.
Okay. Any questions for Eric overall and the new business items we talked about or that audit status? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item nine, which the approval of the meeting minutes from Wednesday, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Regular meeting minutes. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments on that, any discussion? Anybody want to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Diane has motion to approve the meeting minutes from Wednesday, October twenty eighth, uh, twenty twenty, regular meeting. Uh, Louise, the seconded, um, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none and passes unanimously. Thank you. Move on to item ten liaison reports. Um, I don't know that we have any active liaison committees with the possible exception of the CIP. Uh, Louise, do you have anything on that?
No, we're having our next meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Tomorrow night. So.
And can I mention the library? And AHM, um. When Amy librarian was hired, the library had their own personnel policy. And then when we got the charter. The things changed. Um, so, but I do want to say that Amy does work closer or more than thirty hours and she gets paid for twenty six. And she's got her masters in library science. Um, the other thing is AHM had a um. Oversight Committee meeting last week and. This year. There, there's, well, there's a couple of things. First of all, um. Let me just say that according to the state statute, every town has to have a youth service agency. And AHM is ours. Um, second of all, because it's nonprofit, we only pay thirty seven percent. Of their total budget comes from the three towns. Uh, but there, right now, the budget, the way they divide it is based on the RAM formula. And years ago, they were based on the town census and they'd like to go back to the town census. Because they think it's a more reasonable. Number and there wouldn't be the dramatic changes that we have now. And if you do think of it, there's kids that go to magnet schools, there's kids that go to private schools. So the town census is probably a better way to go and it was done that way in the past.
Linda?
Yeah.
You have an idea of what that would do? Like, how would that change things?
They said it's not gonna change that much, but every once in a while you have a town that has a. I don't know, they consider it a big hike. But it all has to do with the census of the school. If it's a census of the town, there's less variance.
Okay.
And.
So is it the Oversight Committee that's gonna make that decision or who is there a board that is gonna make that decision on changing that formula?
Um, the overs. It's in the new oversight. The Oversight Committee meeting hasn't met yet for everybody to approve it. But this is what they're revising it.
Proposing, okay.
Proposing it. So that's what's in it. And. I guess. I guess that's all I have in my notes.
Yeah, Linda, I apologize for not sitting in on that one. I was triple booked, you know, in that time slot. Um, and uh, in the end, AHM lost out. So for that, I apologize.
That's okay. Amanda stuck her head in.
That's, so I was gonna say, what I did was I asked Amanda to go in my stead. So at least, you know, we had a, a town.
That is, and right now, when we see the AH, AHMs, um. Their requested amount in our budget, we have a line item that says AHM.
Yeah.
But in reality, there's a portion that goes to RAM. There's a portion that goes to the Andover Elementary School.
Right.
And they're contemplating taking that part out and just dealing with the towns. It's, it'll be the same amount, but it'll just be one line item instead of being divided into, well, for our town, it would be three. And. As far as a bookkeeping go, it's easier for AHM. And if you think about it, the schools aren't even part of the Oversight Committee agreeing on this. So it's, it's, it's been difficult. Years ago, it was just the towns. And then they included the schools, but they're thinking if you wanted to. I don't know if the bill's a total of hundred and thou- hundred thousand dollars and you want to have El, Andover Elementary chip in thirty thousand. Then that would be for the town to decide. So that's what they're leaning towards right now.
Do you know when the next meeting will be? So Eric can pencil it in?
I don't know at this point in time.
Okay, would this change, how would this change affect what we do as a board if anything? Would there just be a different line item?
We have an AHM line item, but I, I'm just saying if it's split in thirds, if ours is gonna be thirty three thousand dollars. Then it's gonna look like a hundred thousand dollars. So everybody's gonna think that it tripled. If, if the town in AHF, if the town pays third. And a third is in the elementary school budget and the third is in RAM budget, only thirty three thousand is showing up on our line item. And then it's, then it's gonna look like a hundred thousand and people are gonna think our.
So our spreadsheet is gonna show this big uptick and we're just gonna have to message, explain to people that. Look, no, this isn't actually, this is actually. Status quo, we're just changing the bookkeeping.
Right.
Okay. I can do that.
Okay. And I, I think.
Whether people will believe me is another thing.
I know, but then we have to convince them that we're getting a real deal. If you, if you stop and think like I said before. Less than fifty percent. And if the town had to go out and support and their own youth service, it would cost an arm and a leg.
Oh, agreed. I, I, my, both my kids went to HF. It was good stuff.
Okay, thank you, Linda. It's good to have that update. Um, anyone else? Okay, let's move on to item eleven in the agenda. Board open discussions. Anybody have any general discussion and items ring for the board, Eric?
I would like one general discussion with the Board of Finance. We're getting ready to go into budget season. But what I want to know is how you all envision this year going. And by that, I mean, last year, we put off a number of priorities. And we uh, we made some hard decisions and, and that's okay. And I guess what I want to know is, do you all anticipate that we're gonna be in a more minimalist budget? Because of covid? Or are you looking at, you know, really funding the priorities of the town? Um, where does the board kind of fit in that? How do you think the townspeople would react? And you know, where do you see this going?
I mean, I'd say it depends on what the numbers are. Um. You know, we've always as a board tried to keep any tax increase relatively low. Uh, I would be surprised if this board as a group. Okayed something that resulted in a significant, and significant is subjective. Um, a significant jump in one year, right? I like the idea, when you came to us with like a ten year plan. Um, and we can plan based off that. Maybe we can chip away at stuff, but just speaking personally. Um, I don't know if we're gonna suddenly shift gears and just. You know, go full bore if we're. Looking, if, if it results in a, say, say you came to us and said, okay, we gotta do all these things. And if you fully fund everything, it's a five percent tax increase. I can't remember the last time we okayed something like that. And I think we'd probably get killed if we took that to referendum. So it sort of depends on how the numbers look, Eric. I mean, are we saving some money in other places during covid that we can realistically reallocate?
There's some, yes. Um, not a lot. Covid doesn't make much cheaper. No.
You'd wish that was true.
You know, you can think that we went down to three buses. I mean, that was a definite. You know, we save money on diesel. Um, are we gonna end up at three buses next year? Are we gonna be back for four? You know, there are a lot of little things that are. You know, they're.
Dollar fifty gallon gas, that's gonna help.
And expensive gas is good. Um.
Yeah, but anyway, that's, that's just my general take. I'm gonna shut up now, let everybody else talk.
Sure.
My uh, two cents is I think with what we're seeing with covid, it's kind of premature to make that kind of guess, Eric. Um, I will say it's not looking good. As a business owner, I can't imagine. Making a big, large capital expenditure, huge investments right now is too much uncertainty.
I don't think we're gonna know much until we get through this winter and see what the spring starts to show. I think we're gonna be down to the wire again and kind of. Trying to figure it all out because if. Covid's not going away until that vaccine gets out there and gets accepted, gets adopted. So I mean, and that's a long. That's a long timeline for people to get through the population, get everybody to do that. So. Cause the, really, the service industry still has not come back. So there's just still so many people out of work and stuff. So.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, my problem is unfortunately, you know, I need to be. You know, presenting a set of plans and, and options to CIP sooner rather than later, really tomorrow. And a little understanding of what, you know, I don't. And a little understanding of what, you know, I don't wanna put together elaborate plan if I know it's not fundable, you know?
Yeah, I mean, Eric, I mean, put together your plan, and um my take would be try to aim for something that isn't wildly higher than what we're spending now.
Yeah.
Even though I understand that this year was kind of a, how do you wanna, treading water, keeping the lights on, that kind of a budget? You know, you can take that and kind of take your optimistic case and crank it up a bit, but I wouldn't go crazy on it, because yeah, where there's a lot of uncertainty, and as as we also said, you know, look, the vaccines hopefully are coming, there are multiple vaccine trials that apparently have reported really great results, but that that's like six months out from the point where we can just say, okay, great, we're good. And that's the best case scenario, so you know, I I hate to say it, cuz I know we got a backlog. I know we got stuff to do.
Yep.
Any input from, go ahead, Linda?
My question is, we don't know how it's hitting individual families. I mean, my family's fine, my kids live out of state, but they're all working, so I don't know how many families in town, this is really hurting, so that would have something to do with what we do with our budget.
Sure.
Financially.
There's a huge d- divide, as far as I can tell, you know, those of us who do professional jobs that you know, we might have done in a cubicle before, but we can do from home, have been almost unaffected, financially unaffected. You know, I certainly haven't been, right? I have my same exact job that I had done for twenty some odd years now at Travelers. Nothing's, I mean, the workflow has changed, but no interruption, no nothing. I have other people I know who, their job just vanished, and they've up and had to do something completely different, so it I don't know, and I don't know how you even track that.
The other piece of it too, and I'll I'll, Eric and I have to talk about this today, I did go to the town hall about um take care of some personal stuff, um but the I I there's a couple of factors here, obviously, I mean, and and you know, um like Linda brought that up, and it was important, you know, we, we don't know how it's affecting people individually. You know, we do know a few things, I mean, we know that the real estate market stayed hot, right? That didn't, that didn't tank. Um, it doesn't, you know, th- there is a disparate, you know, uh it's just very disparate in the way that this pandemic has affected people, as Rob pointed out. Um, the other thing, it's gonna really is kind of the unknown, and and just throwing this out there, but there's you know, is there gonna be additional stimulus and support packages coming from the federal government? You know, that's just unknown, if that, if that's, those kinda things remain in place, then I would feel more comfortable, you know, being a little more aggressive with the budget. I do not think that we should try to do what we did last year, which is basically stick with a flat budget to our own detriment in the town, we just put off too many important things that need to be done, we put, you know, we kicked the can down the road for so long, that has to be remedied at some point. You know, but I also agree, we can't go, we can't go overboard, you know, we're gonna have to be somewhat restrained in how we approach this. Because there's, people pointed out, there is a lot of uncertainty, you know, my general feeling is that things are, you know, gonna be on the upturn. Um, but th- there is a lot of uncertainty, that's a good point.
And there's some lag, you know? And and as, as you know, pointed out, Mark, you know, the question of what the federal government does, I mean, it's fairly clear that nothing's gonna get done in the lame duck, so the the first time that anything might happen would be January. And then it takes a while for that to kick in.
Right, right.
Meanwhile, we're trying to work up our budget at the same time.
Yeah.
Right, and so that's what makes it so hard.
Yeah, checks got mailed pretty quick last time, and I'm I'm, I would like to think that that may happen.
Sure.
Pandemic, it continues on this, in this
If we get CARES Act two point O, and they're just sending people money, yeah, I agree, that could be done quickly, and we can hope for that. But
We'll just have to wait and see on some of that.
Right.
But I, but I think it would be a mistake, and we would not be doing our constituents you know, a- adequately, you know, just doing them justice by just, you know, ignoring, you know, the safe route, which is just saying, oh, we're not gonna try to raise taxes again. You know, the reality is, I think that we're gonna have to at some point, we know we're gonna have to, we avoided it for a long time, it's not comfortable, nobody wants to pay it. God knows I don't. Um, you know, yeah, we're fortunate to keep our jobs, although I had to take a pay cut for a while, it happens, you know, but we'll uh you know, I think we'll get through it, you know, I I think a measured response, but I think we have to get back on track sooner rather than later. That's kind of my personal take on it.
I agree with that, I don't think we can kick the can too much longer without causing ourselves bigger problems in the long run. And you we, again, we have to think about it in the long run, we have to think about the next five to ten years, not just tomorrow. Um, and so if it's a, you know, Eric, if you crunch your numbers, and you come out with something at CIP that would all things being equal, result in a three percent increase, okay, I'm interested in hearing about that. If you come up, come at us with a ten percent increase, I just have to think that's just dead in the water. That's what, you know, just to throw, make up numbers, but
Sure, no, understood, and and that's, that's exactly the feedback I want from you, you know, for my due diligence and my planning, like, you know, where we're going with this, and and you know, how we can all kinda make this work.
Are we looking to do uh, to build a senior center next year? Is that, I mean, I know we're exploring it now, we have draft plans, do I mean?
Do I think we're likely to start construction next year? No.
No.
Not a chance in hell.
Okay.
You know, I think the committee's gonna chew on it for a while, and then eventually, they're gonna have to hire an architect. Um, that'll take a while, and come back with full set of renderings and, you know, a real layout and mechanicals, and you know, all that. And that's gonna, that's gonna chew up a bunch of time, it's gonna have to go, there's gonna have to be a series of meetings. We're gonna have to accept it as a town, um and then we're gonna have to start begging for money, basically. Um, you know, and and push some legislative buttons, and uh you know, see what else is out there in the kinda grant landscape to help us pay for that. Um, because, you know, what we're, what they're proposing is pretty modest in scale. It's probably only, you know, roughly a million dollars to construct. But, you know, when you think that our municipal budget is really only about three million dollars, a million bucks is not something to sneeze about.
That's our total budget, like thirteen?
Yeah, something like that.
And and it's eighty percent schools.
Uh, yeah.
That's a, it's a big number, a million bucks for us.
It is, it is, I, and the other thing is that at some point, we're gonna have to have a a serious conversation about whether we bond, um bond for building, and bond for roadwork um and bridge and culvert repair. And I don't think we're, we're there yet, but I think it's something we're gonna, that's a discussion that's gonna have to be had at some point. You know?
Can I say something? With the la- with the last budget, I think everyone kinda understood last time, as far as why we did what we did last time, and I think it was kind of accepted, so I think maybe people are kinda thinking that things might raise a little bit more this coming year, even though COVID is out there. So I think we need to maybe tread water a little bit, but hit our priorities. And I think, I think it will be accepted, because we've already gone through that last year.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly tried to lay the groundwork for the idea that we were gonna, you know, need to make some investments in the town and in the infrastructure in the future, so, you know, how much of that'll carry over, it probably really depends on how much people are feeling it, and what their risk or level of uncertainty is.
Yeah, I mean, at some point, sorry, go on, sorry, Mark, I thought you would
I just said, I think Louise is correct, and
You you get to the point where, you know, if the, if the bridge, you know, if some culvert gets to the point where you can't drive over it, we have to do something.
Right, yes.
They're gonna wanna know why we didn't, yeah.
Yeah, right, you guys have been hearing this report for ten years, and you didn't fund it, well, yeah, because we didn't wanna raise your taxes, that's not a good answer. So, correct, um, we had to balance it, so Eric, I'd say, try your medium case, man, try, you know, thread that needle. I don't have process.
Yeah, and we'll let you know if that's really our medium case or not, but uh, yeah, that'd be a good place to start.
Okay, fair enough, I I appreciate the the guidance on that.
All right, um, do we have any other discussion before the board, general discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to item twelve, which is public speak, any public speak requests? All right. Well, hearing none, that'll take us to item thirteen, which is adjournment. Anybody have any discussion, or I hear a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Okay, Rob moves to adjourn the meeting, do I have a second?
I'll second.
The seconds, uh any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the meeting is so adjourned, uh thank you, everybody, you have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Be careful out there, and uh we'll be talking uh next month, not sooner.
Thanks, Mark, as usual, thanks, Eric.
Take care, enjoy.